One nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
I will, Father, wish y'all a happy... Dear Lord God, we thank you, Lord God, for all of your many blessings you bestowed upon the city of Dillon. We thank you, Lord God, for our mayor, our city council, the city department heads on tonight, and city attorney, city manager. We ask that you continue to bless us, Lord God, in these meetings, and we make the decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise. Well, it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
Welcome, everybody, here to see you our regularly scheduled meeting. I have a motion to approve the agenda. Come on, say, all favor. Pose. I have a motion approved a minute forty to June thirteenth, regular scheduled meeting, and also to June thirtieth, special call meeting. Second. All favor. I propose. And I know you've got a couple of things to go over tonight. It might take a little bit of time. I just have a few things I want to go over. First of all, the good news I have tonight is the clock is fixed. The guy was here Thursday and Friday. He worked all through the day. Very hot out there. He kind of monkey Thursday evening, had to go in, finish up Friday. Ended up being out there all day Friday. That he, I don't know how he did it, which looked like it's more than a one-man job. Don't realize how big that clock is to stand under. You can take those panels off, everything. But it was, took him two days. He'll be wrapped up late Friday evening or this past Saturday. But it looked very good. Timepieces are on all four sides now. There was no temperature gauge. But they're all active. We vote the clock won't present a problem going forward for some time. And I think we got a warranty on that now for how long?
Yeah, I don't remember.
I think it's five years.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
Clock repair cost was somewhere in the amount of twenty-five percent of the actual cost of purchase of clock twelve, thirteen years ago. So it's not cheap. A letter. Did we send a letter to the property owners on the commercial property of Radford about agricultural use? Have we gotten to that yet?
No, sir, but I can.
Still holding that?
Yes.
Is that the only one that falls in that, or those on commerce too?
On commerce.
We need to send them on.
Okay, now commerce drive in, and Radford's where you were looking to do it?
Yes, sir.
What I'm talking about is on our most vibrant commercial district that, you know, I was wondering if you could plant a cornfield right off of Radford Boulevard and so forth. And the way I understand it's not in our work. And I don't think it looks good. So I went to Glenn and Benny about it, and we're addressing that. Let me ask y'all's opinion on this, because I know we get our package every Friday afternoon. Sometimes I mouth off, that's when I get it and have to bring it home. But our package, this is kind of a small one, but it's about this thing. I'm wondering, you know, with all, you got seven council members, you think you get one. Betsy, you get one. Is it time to go to an iPad or something to transmit this material? Would it be better on time-wise, when this material requested, you can just download it to somebody else? This is an awful lot, awful lot of paper.
With what? Yeah, it is a lot of paper. Yeah, it could be. It could be emailed. And a lot of your paper is your monthly budget. I mean, that's it there. That's your paper. If that's where you want to go.
Well, I have one. I mean, somebody else may not have one. They aren't very expensive any longer today.
Well, we talked about that a couple of years ago. We did talk about that.
They left it on my back door. I mean, if I'm gone for a week, I don't get it. I know I'm going to get it. You know, it's, sometimes you're late getting it to us, and not your thoughts are waiting on information to come in.
Yeah, because we try to give you the most updated financial report that we can provide. We can look at doing that and see how it works.
Well, I don't want to do it. I'm not, don't want to do it if it's not the best thing to do. I mean, if this, you think this is where we need to go going forward, save time, save money, get a little more green?
Do you want hard copies, or do you want?
I wouldn't want hard.
Everybody's going to be able to print what they want, and things of that nature?
I can scroll right down without, boom, 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 right on it without printing anything. That's the whole idea. We need not to print all the paperwork. Just consider it.
Well, we can consider. Now, I mean, y'all can consider it. Are we going to, we going to provide everyone with an iPad?
But wouldn't have one, I think. I mean, the city would own. It would be like a device that you only use it for city business, I think, if you do it that way.
And then the next question would be, are we going to provide them with or without wireless service?
You would not necessarily need...
I mean, without, yes, some of us may have internet at home, some of us may not.
You won't need internet to transmit the file, do you?
Yeah.
You will.
If this is going to be emailed, you'd open it, not have to have internet.
Just look in. That's all. It may not be feasible to do. That's it. I mean, it's just a lot of stuff.
I know we had talked about it a couple of years ago.
My question is, how time-consuming is it, Janet, for you to do all this and get to the people? I mean, is it really time-consuming?
Twelve hours. Once I do the entries by the hour, to do the copies.
It doesn't bug you? I mean, it doesn't bug me, you know, go look at the paper, that's fine.
Well, we do, as I said, the other boards, I said, it's an option. I'd rather have mine emailed to me that I can look at on the tablet, and not have to worry about your delivery yet, too.
I mean, Dick's recent call is one of the paid next month, correct?
Yeah, your next, your next council check won't be delivered. It'll be directly posted.
I can email them this next month, and let you try that and see if you like it.
We'll do, we'll do both ways, and see how it works. And then between now and then, we'll find out who needs devices.
All right.
And go from there.
Okay. I know Maggie's, is she in Hartschool now?
No, she's, she's, see, she goes to Hartschool for that meeting, I think it's the twenty-second, twenty-third of this month. Would you be, I guess, late next week?
Well, I told Maggie to get with what Hartschool's doing on downtown, even though development over there was real promising. So I'm looking forward to that. I went to Florence last week, and off of North Dargan Street, just could not believe what Florence has done downtown. You don't, you don't know Florence in downtown, that's been dead. It may stay dead, but it won't be for not trying. They're putting a ton of money in it. Group of side grants are reassigned, grants, business license credits, utility incentives, reduction in water and sewer feet. They're doing it all. I mean, some of the things we might can piggyback, but I'll let Maggie come in next week and have updates on what I brought up from Hartschool.
Have we, have we increased the money for the facade this time around? I can't remember that.
We increased it during the year. Not in the budget. Whenever we increased this past year, we kept the same amount of money. I don't remember what that is right off the...
The budget is passed. It was passed on June thirtieth in a special call meeting, the night before fiscal year started. Special meeting got, you know, a little spirity, which is good. I don't think a council should come up and have a hundred percent agreement on everything, pass unanimously on everything. We didn't hope it's a lie, and it didn't pass unanimously. One of the reasons I did not vote for the budget at the time, Janet did call me and gave me a clarification on my concern on the water sewer revenues, where we increased the water sewer rates. The increase in the rates weren't allocated to the 2016 revenue figures. So when I looked at the revenue figures, I saw that we weren't going to get the revenues to meet the budget. Over what, we looked for a cushion in that, did not factor in the increase of the 2016 anticipated revenues. So that made a huge difference in the amount of about $250,000. But I naturally thought we were going to have trouble with the budget at that time. But that's not the case. When I looked at these ledger statements, that's all I have to look at. And not knowing that, I don't even know that, but we do now. Budget is passed. It does have increases in some areas, especially on the water sewer side. No increases in building. A lot of fees are going up with the health insurance. Double-digit increase or close to, and three point four percent across the board increase on salary, full-time salary. So that was the bulk of the increases. On the water sewer side, the increases in the water sewer rates were the bulk of the revenues. And there was approximately a three point five, I think, percentage increase in sanitation rates. Somewhere in that, about three something.
Three point four.
Three point four. That's kind of a highlight of budget. It was tough this year from what Glenn told me. A little more than, it used to be hard for, it's hard to raise money today. Because inflation's tacking up on things, on all the wrong things, and deflation's hitting the rest. A lot of times it's not very good. But the budget is done, and I think it's a good budget for time to set in Dillon.
Well, if I can follow with the mayor, do we, do we send out some type of advertisement to the citizens to let them know that their water bill's going on, going up? Or do we just let it be a culture shock to them, hey, it's three fifty, it's five dollars? I mean, how do we do that?
No, we don't send nothing. I kind of rely on the newspaper, you know, to really do it. It's going to, yeah, it will be. It will be, absolutely.
Will you have citizens coming up here asking you questions on what's going on?
Oh, they will. The first bill, they'll come in and say, why is my water bill higher at that time? But we do, we rely on the newspaper and y'all's council meeting being on TV to do that.
I think sanitation rates, we're still very competitive. Are lower than most municipalities across the board in our area. So the plus is a doing it in-house. And that's, that's pretty much all I have on the seat.
All right, well, I do have a lot, but it's really just communicating some things. And I'll start with Jack and Dennis. I had received a letter and a visit from Brian Mason, who's a realtor here in Dillon County, about donating some property to the city. When people come to us about donating property, Jack and I both backed up and said, wait, sir, I'm not quite sure. But in this case, it's property that we utilize. And in fact, I'll turn it over to Jack, and he can give you all the details.
Over on Calhoun Street, there's a lot of it that is utilized as a park back in this section. City thought that they owned it. Glenn said it ever since he's been here twenty-one years, it's been a park there. We thought we owned it. Come to find out, some picket family owned it. They didn't pay the taxes on it. And Mr. Johnson's Corporation bought it into the tax sale. They now want to donate it to the city for a tax credit of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. That'd just be a tax credit. And one of the other things, place a sign on it saying that Robert and Vivian Johnson donated it to the city. I think Glenn, in no, in no buildings, no asbestos on it. He said, no. I said, well, I'm okay.
And I, I have no idea how long we've been using that land. Councilman Washington may know. Whether you know Calhoun eleventh avenue. Well, Lynn may know. It's been there since you were a little girl.
So that's what y'all, in our life of training, did you y'all tell me to do?
You mean, for the motion?
Yeah, if we accept it, you do.
What would we do?
Oh, we still, we use it as we do it now as a park. It's one of the neighborhood parks.
Because we love the way you did it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all the favor. I propose.
The next thing, and I put in the comments to your letter to you, and we talked at our last meeting back at the end of junior and our budget process about the Dillon Historic Foundation of J.D. Martin, of their request. And I know several of the committee members are here. And if you like, if you want to hear from them, you can go from there. In my letter, I recommended or commented that we could donate money to this project and use our own local three percent money. I think speaking with Dillon County again today, they're doing the same thing. I've been told they're donating five thousand, is that correct? Five thousand dollars towards this project. So if you don't mind, I'll let them speak on their behalf.
I'm Mayor Noah, Secretary. We could sure use some help on this auditorium. Any donation would be greatly appreciated, and we could put it to good use. Our plans and hopes are that someday that auditorium will be reopened, and we can get some arts and culture back into our city and county. We'd be very grateful for anything you can do, and we'd, most of all, like to have your support personally, speaking out for us. We could use that. It would mean a lot to a lot of different people in this county if they knew that our city was behind us. Thank you.
Did you thank anybody else? I know I'm wrong, Mel, that I'm, I kept up with them, but that's it. Did you say the air conditioning work for you?
Yes, sir.
Well, I can. Can we make a motion tonight and be done with it, Glenn?
Yes, yes, that's...
Y'all, the reason I'm saying is, the county donated five thousand dollars. Why can't we as a city donate five thousand and help them out, the same thing with, you know, what the county needs? I'd like to make a motion that we give them five thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
All the favor? Pose. Yes, sir.
No, that kind of bolsters me because I was missing what you said, well, a little about Hartschool, downtown development, and Florence downtown development, and renovating the old auditorium is a plus for that to happen. I came prepared to share some things from a Florence Morning News article that's going on in other places in the country, whether revitalizing downtowns by refurbishing theaters just like this one. And it was the theater at one time. I know the Dillon County Theater was a movie theater. Anything that happened as far as performances were concerned, it happened in the Dillon High School Auditorium.
Y'all put a lot of time and effort in it, nothing more for, give you a shot, get it, and support it. Challenge, I know it's been a challenge, it may have been a challenge, but we look forward to seeing how it goes.
Speaking of direct deposits earlier, we were scheduled to start that this past week, but due to the four being on Monday, and we having to turn information into the bank on Tuesday, the law until this week, so the pay period for employees on Thursday, all the information we put are sent to the bank electronically tomorrow, and they should have their checks on, or their pay and their deposits at their particular bank starting Thursday morning. So we'll see how that works. One of the projects that I've been working on, and I've tried to keep you abreast as much as possible, is to search for our new police chief. Tonight, as I mentioned to you in my letter, I invited the final three candidates. Also invited the search committee that I selected to help me get down to these three candidates. And the goal tonight is really just to introduce these folks to you, so you can see who they are. Prefer, if you had any questions, just wait after council meeting, and then you can talk with them one-on-one or in a group session, if you don't have an issue with that. At this time, I'd like to introduce our committee members who are here. Pastor Jamie Smith, Johnny Daniels, Drew here, Carmen Bathe, and Art Redmond's not here, and Tonya Bovall's not here, and Miss Karen English. That is our search committee. We've met three times, if I'm not mistaken. And meeting again tomorrow, we'll do some more interviews with our three candidates. I'll introduce our three candidates, which are actually in alphabetical order. Captain David Lane with Dillon City Police Department, Lieutenant Kimberly Nelson with the City of Darling Police Department, and Lieutenant Jamie Seals of Marlboro County Sheriff's Department. You folks stand up. Thank you. And the last thing I have on my, on my list, if you will help me with this, this will be helpful for me. If we can change our monthly meeting in August to either the first Monday or the third Monday, I'm going to be out of, actually in Mississippi that second Monday of August. Do y'all have an issue with changing that? Do you prefer the first or the third Monday?
I'll be out first.
Third Monday's okay with everybody? And I am. I'm sorry?
Oh, but what other do you, other do you?
First or third Monday?
Four.
For our next council meeting, instead of the second Monday. So everybody's okay with the third Monday of August? I will make sure we remind you prior to that. That's all I have at this time.
This time, we have the citizens report anything, anybody out, want us to like to bring to our attention? With none unfinished business, we have none new business ordered sixteen twelve, adopted twenty fifteen edition for international hunger code. Have a motion. Second motion. Second call of favor. I propose. Council member reports of Australia.
Yeah, Glenn, I wanted to know if we could get a handicap sign on the handicap swing?
We're going to, we're going to do that. We're also putting on the swing to be used by wheelchairs only. Bert's working on putting in a sidewalk for the entrance, and we'll probably have to end up with this.
I've heard some people have been hanging on.
They have, they have.
I want to thank the committee. From what I've heard, I've heard nothing but good things. This is a challenging time for us, getting a police chief. And I just want to thank this committee for putting your heart and soul in, being able to ask the questions, and, you know, taking part in this. Glenn, the mayor mentioned something about the wellness center in our last meeting. And I just want to ask you, you know, we, we a hundred and fifty thousand dollars we lost this year in the wellness center. And I want to know what we could do to try to get that deficit somewhat down. It's been trending up over the years, and it's, it's a great thing. And I don't know if we need to raise the rates. I just think we need to kind of watch that.
I'm just trying to remember offhand. A lot of, probably was repairs. I don't know right off the pennies, but I'll see. Yes, our rates have been the same since two thousand and seven.
What, what was the balance, beginning day, end day, on that reserve fund out of that account? Did we grow it, or did we lose money?
Which account are you speaking about?
I'm talking about the reserve account, boy, that we have, and I hate to call it a reserve account, before the fitness center, the two percent hot meals tax.
We collected over five hundred thousand in it. We collected five hundred thirty-nine thousand, and we spent four hundred fifty-two thousand.
So where did the park concluded in this year or last year? I can't remember.
That was done last year.
I guess it was prior to this year. That wasn't in this budget, did you?
No, sir.
Expenses were four sixty.
Four sixty-seven, I'm sorry, that is correct. We started the year at seven hundred thousand in that account. We added five hundred thirty-nine thousand to that account. Then we took out...
Seven eighty.
And then we took out four hundred sixty. We're down to seven seventy-one. So we gained seventy-one thousand dollars during the year.
Well, you know, and, and we got a tornado going. And I, and I'm totally with you. We need to run the guy, of course, and the, and the fitness center in the business. But, you know, did we lose money? We spent money above what it brought in. Now, is that a loss? We are here to steward the money, steward the money properly. We are here to give a better quality of life. I think I, I don't know whether I look at that as we lost money. We need to do a better job business-wise. And if we need to go up on the rates, it's time to do that. I think we should do that. But I think at the end of the day, if, if our receipts plus our two percent hot meals tax, we cleared seventy-one thousand dollars, I don't recall that a loss. I mean, that's, that's it. Well, that's me, too. I'm going on. I think everybody's listening.
What, the wellness center, boy, baby?
But Johnny, I'm not, I'm not trying to contradict you. I'm just trying to, you know, help us understand, you know, if we want to do it correctly, but, I mean, at the end of the day, we're here to give a better quality of life. And I can't, I can't think of anything that has happened in the last twenty-five years that has made a more positive impact on quality of life in Dillon County than that wellness center.
Then I'm not disputing you, Don Wallace.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, that, I mean, am I wrong? I don't know. Anybody thinks differently about this?
If anything, I'd like to possibly say it's go up just on the daily user fees. I mean, the, most places, it's a minimum of ten to fifteen dollars for the daily user fees. Possibly encourage them to...
Come in and be a member.
I mean, if we're not, go up seven bucks.
What you're making?
I don't, I don't know.
But if you look at the ledger, your daily users, I mean, it's averaging three thousand a month.
Right.
I mean, I don't know how we can convince them to become a member.
Right.
Three thousand a month, that's...
Whoops, get ten more dollars.
Six hundred payer dues, is that correct?
I don't, in my writing?
We collect, we collect almost thirty-eight thousand. I mean, we collect the thirty-eight thousand for daily users during the year.
Yeah, six hundred payer dues, that is huge.
And if you look at, I mean, you can, when it comes to numbers, you can look at them a hundred different ways. From an expense side, based on what we budgeted, and what we actually did, we budgeted three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars in expenses. We spent four hundred twenty-one thousand, which is about forty-two thousand over in expenses. From the revenue side, we budgeted three hundred seventy-nine thousand, which was the same as the expenses, but we actually brought in two hundred seventy-two thousand, which is a hundred and six thousand difference. But in our budget, we budgeted a hundred and six thousand, which is coming two percent off, as we've done in the past season.
You budgeted before it's not beat out.
Because we, we felt about when we, when we started, we were going to spend after offset it with about a, about a ninety to a hundred, somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars. And we first entertained the idea of, we knew it was probably going to go into hold. That round actually, there is a problem.
Yeah, but shouldn't we try, like you just said, if we try to get the deficit back?
We're not going to close that gap totally, but, but, you know, trying to, trying to make...
I mean, from the revenues point, I mean, we did good. It's just our expenses. You know, and I don't know how you can curb that in a way.
What I mean, I'm looking at, one of our biggest expenses is electricity and gas out there, which were four thousand dollars. gas out there, which we were $4,000 over compared to what we budgeted. It was $8,000. Eight years old, eight years old? 07 to now, yeah. Nine years, nine years old. Ten years. That's about the lifetime of a lot of that equipment. Well, our, our buildings and grounds, which would be repairs to the building, air conditioning units, things of that nature, we budgeted 15,000, we spent 32,000. Those are the two big line items other than the salaries for full-time and part-time people. We were $6,000 over on our part-time salaries, and a little less than 2,000 over on our full-time salaries.
Do you think if we increased the rate somewhere down the road, that we would lose members?
I don't, I don't know that we will lose a lot. Membership's not really a thing that you measure on a, on a monthly basis, because it's time of the year, we lose. Slow anyway. Yeah, we lose some.
I mean, we put promotions out all through the year.
Our, our biggest jump, our biggest jump is usually December, January 5th. New Year's resolutions. And then sometimes, when they go back to school, kids go back to school, parents will sign up. We can, you know, to see what we got there. I mean, if you look at membership, or look at from the revenues, our rentals aren't doing as good as they have in the past, but we've never budgeted more than $20,000 for rentals. This year, we collected a little less than 15,000. Membership, we budgeted 211, we brought in 205,000. So we're about five, little, $6,000 less. Daily users were 7,000 more than what we budgeted, which was 30,000, we brought in 37,000. So I mean, that's, that's our revenue stream right there. And daily users, if you go back and look, and I could be wrong, but I'm not sure that I am, daily user revenue has increased annually. I think when we started, it was around $20,000, and we've gotten it up now to 37,000. And so it has your 2% hospitality, when you take 2% off. Yeah. It has. And I think that's due to, as someone told me two or three years ago, wouldn't do to the fact that people are eating out more, it's due to the fact their prices went up when you went and purchased. I mean, you go to McDonald's now. Yeah, but we've seen, we, I believe the first year we did that, before we started building, it was like 260,000, something like that. And it has doubled, you know, SUI has not doubled over that senior period of time.
Well, I want to ask Janet, is there any reason why, like on the golf course, you take it out monthly, and then at the end of the year, you take out the wellness center? Could you do it the same way, or how, I'm noticing that, you do it each month for the golf course?
Golf course, we use general fund money during the year. I mean, the wellness center. So at the end of the year, or at the end of the autumn period, we see how much we use from general, general fund to pay those bills that make the wellness center fit and full. The golf course is set up on its own checking account, I guess is the answer. I mean, that, and, and that's the reason we do it on a monthly basis there, because we may be down to $2,000 in the golf course account, and we've got $4,000 or whatever amount may be more than what we've got in that account, this actual checking account. So we have to then move money over to, to pay whatever bill we have.
Um, I know it's been several months. Tony Manille came before the council, and he asked us to give him some money for a survey. Is there some way we can get him to come back in and give us an update on where they had with the survey on, Lord, some kind of nice restaurant here to the city?
Because we paid him 50% of that back in February, I guess, and we budgeted again the other 50% in this budget. I will get with him.
Okay. That's it, Mayor.
I just want to echo what Johnny said, we thank those that served on the committee and helped select a new police chief. I think it's important that the community's been involved in that process, and I appreciate you taking the time to do it. That's a real service to the city, so thank you so much for your efforts. Just a quick question, have we finished our work on the sewer line out at the bridge on 301?
We finished what they needed to be, yeah, we finished. So they can start drilling the pylons, which they have. We are now on the new line. We have abandoned the old line. Now, we haven't completed all of it, but the, the new line is in service.
Are we going to still have to take up the old line?
No, we won't take the old line, and we'll put in fillable flow. So that it doesn't open up.
Do they give them any kind of further timetable on when they're anticipating closing that road?
Probably next summer.
Excellent.
The goal was to do it this summer, but due to the rains, we had to fall in December, that put them behind, when I say they, DOT's contractors. Because we were supposed to start our project in January, we didn't get in there until first of May, because we were waiting on it. So they're, they're that far behind.
Glenn, have you ever heard the more about the people that piss that good?
I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I think you have someone from the C-Fun Committee here.
I'm glad you're here too. Really, because I, I'd like to know how y'all prioritize the roads.
I didn't mean to bring you in. Feel that buzz going up?
One thing, and it was just what I was thinking the other day, many out at Shawnee's, I've had a couple complaints that when they're coming up to the red light, they want to take a right on red, they cannot see, because some shrubs have grown up pretty bad, they won't eat that sign. And I noticed that today, I really got to just look at it, it is pretty, it's growing more towards the sidewalk, which is kind of keeping them from, when they go to take that right turn on red, they can't see that sign.
Uh, Johnson Drive, similar though. If you're looking. At the sign. Right, well, no, if you're coming out Johnson Drive and trying to look south, you can't, you can't see, you got to pull out the road to see. Bert, you got?
No, Bert, just, yeah. And it may be more Bert than. But would it abandon, but I think this is on their property. Run over to the sidewalk here, I mean, because it's something ours.
Since we have the seat, 21st of year, we're going to talk about it another time?
Yeah.
It would be nice if the chairman maybe could come in one day and just maybe give us some sort of idea on.
I'll ask him.
I mean, just, I mean, because I have no idea, I've never heard how they do it either. It would be nice if.
Yeah, she'd come here.
As long as you get, as long as you don't have to.
I just got a note handed to me, I think Betsy sent it, she's got here that closing the bridge July 18th through August 14th. July 18th this year? Yeah, through August the 14th. Okay. Something else for good council, we going to go ahead to Jern and get out, have a motion to Jern?